Okay, great. So we are back, sorry. Back to the next portion of the March 11th, 2025 meeting. As you can see, we've been joined by our friends on the Finance Committee and our friends from the School Department. And we're going to talk about the school budget tonight. Did you want to start with anything else, anything, or we're just going to go right into the school?
No.
Yeah, let's go right into it.
You know, before we, we did acknowledge earlier, a woman named Barbara Petson, who worked for the schools for many, many years past. Barbara Petson passed.
Oh, really? I did not know that.
Yes. I found that out today, but she worked for the Hatfield Schools back when I was there. So, not recently, but she was there for a very long time. So. So we did, we did acknowledge that earlier. You might want to look for the obituary. Okay.
Thank you for inviting us to share our draft budget. So that you're seeing the schools, Hatfield Public Schools budgeted draft for FY26. This is prior to the School Committee public hearing. So we're looking forward to your input and hearing your thoughts. And I will turn it over to Dr. Driscoll.
Great, thank you. As Christie said, thanks for having us tonight as we go through this. This, this information will not be new for the Finance Committee. So we're looking forward to.
A little new.
A little new, a little bit, not, not much, though. And we're looking forward to sharing it with the, with the Select Board. So we'll start right off with it. So we're looking to maintain the currently, current services we offer, which is level, level service funding, which we require an additional two and a half percent from, from town funds. So that maintains some of the strategic cuts we made last year while still allowing us to remain competitive and to build, build on the programs that we currently, currently offer. For example, at Smith Academy, it allows for two new innovation pathways. So that's the Adventure Leadership Innovation Pathway, as well as the Mental Health Innovation Pathway. Those are designed to help, you know, kind of bridge that gap between vocational and traditional schooling, which helps students, prepares students either to go into the workforce or to further their education in those fields. It allows us to develop a program that we are really excited about for next year, which is concurrent enrollment with Rott State University, where we are able to offer college-level courses for college credit in-house at Smith Academy on our own schedule. So it eliminates the, the travel factor for students that were looking for dual enrollment at either Community College, HEC, or Smith College, which we're, we're very excited about. It should be added that neither of those things add to our budget. We're able to do that with our current resources, both human and capital. It keep, allows us to keep our sports and expand our sports program as we bring sixth grade into the Smith Academy for next year and maintains two, two classrooms per grade level at the elementary school, plus the specials programs that we have there. It also allows us to maintain our STAR class, which is our sort of substantially separate program for special ed at the elementary school, which saves us, though, though it's kind of expensive program, it actually saves us money for out-of-district placements. It includes COLA for all staff. We're in the process right now of negotiating with the HTA for a new contract. We are hoping, with our fingers crossed, that we may have a final agreement tomorrow, whether negotiations meeting. And it, the last point here is pretty important. It includes $126,000 and change in addition, additional out-of-district tuition and funding. So as we look at our increase that we're asking for the town, tuition alone, and this is tuition, out-of-district tuition for students who we, we, we don't have the services to provide for in district, including our STAR program. That alone accounts for 83% of our increase that we're asking for. And in total, special ed is 75% of our total budget increase, which includes not just the town increase, but also across all of our lands.
Does that out-of-district tuition also include choice out?
No.
No, it doesn't. That's, this is specifically for approved special ed programs for students on IEPs.
Before we flip the page on this, because I don't want it to get too lost. The innovation pathways.
Yep.
So can you just like in a quick sentence or two, describe the two pathways?
You bet. Yeah. So the first pathway is the Adventure Leadership Pathway, and that's for students who have an interest in either outdoor education. They have an interest in maybe medicine that they're going into. They could get certified to become either first responders. They could get certified to be, become ski controllers, that kind of thing. And it prepares them to go, you know, maybe get a job with like a Knowles course or, or other, other groups like that. And the adventure, the innovation pathways as a, as a, as a kind of idea were really from the state. They, they were proposing this to, to schools to better prepare students to enter the workforce or to enter higher education. And so the, the goal isn't to compete with like a, a Smith Vocational, but the goal is to identify areas where there is a need for, for, for workers, quite frankly. And then to have them graduate high school with industry-recognized credentials. So certifications that can allow them to go get a job right out of high school or prepare them if they are interested in furthering their education in that field. So the first one, as I mentioned, is Adventure Leadership, which prepares, prepares students for those things, as well as maybe careers in education. And the second is a Mental Health Innovation Pathway for students who are interested in psychology, in going to the field of mental health, maybe as counselors or educators, that, that kind of thing. And again, the goal is to, to work with our courses in-house. Higher education courses, so dual enrollment, either through one of our existing partnerships or a new partnership. And the, the third piece is actual work experience, so partnering with organizations and businesses to give students that, that practical, practical experience as well.
One of the upsides of this is that we've been talking about finding things that make our district distinct, because it's, we need to continue to draw, and these are programs that aren't, they aren't sitting anywhere around us. So we have a good opportunity with kids who have these interests, who can choose to come into Hatfield, as well as I think they, they polled kids that are in our schools already and what their interests are. And so this aligns with that as well.
That was going to be my next question. Okay. Great, thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't want to take too much of a detour. I just.
If we go to the next, the next slide here, it says swing factors. There's still a couple of things as it's, it's marked that we're, we're getting, but that this plan really already does account for. The first, as I mentioned, we're in negotiations. We are, we're very close to the, the final stage, but it's not yet voted on. So just, just for reference, Hatfield is a place people like to work and they like to stay and they like to teach and stay, which is great. It's a wonderful, it's, it's wonderful to have that. That means that 60%, 63% of our staff have, have stayed and are at a place where they are either currently maxed out or, or maxing out their step increases for next year. The also includes the anticipated COLA and, and some other needs that are, that are placed within the budget, too. The, the piece I mentioned about out-of-district tuition, that's in flux, because we are still currently trying to find some of those placements. Right now, the estimate that we have is, for next year total, is about just over, just north of $400,000 for out-of-district placements, which is higher than, than this current year.
No, those are special education.
Those are special ed, out-of-district placements, correct? And if you want to talk about the.
There are a few unbudgeted wild cards. So all the stuff Connor just mentioned, we've already accounted for it in the numbers you're seeing tonight. The unbudgeted wild cards are really about the changing landscape of the federal funding situation, which none of us have a crystal ball, but you know, we hear about some changes that are coming. There, there is a little bit of federal funding that comes into Hatfield. Massachusetts, on average, sees about 10% of their budgets will be through federal funding. Ours is just under 2% at Hatfield. So there's $153,000 that is assuming that the aid we've been getting consistently will continue. Maybe it comes from a different department. We'll wait and see. And that the budget also assumes that the state will be able to continue to fund the free lunch program for all. And it's a commitment that the state has made, but we just recognize that they get USDA funding for that program. And if that were to go away, we might need to see some changes in that. Historically, even when we have students paying for lunch, we, we see about a, somewhere between 15,000 to 35,000. It's really varied a lot over the years in costs that we incur for a lunch program when it's a paid lunch. So these are the wild cards that are not sitting in the budget today.
But is there a wildcard that could be a benefit? We spoke earlier about our increase in Chapter 90 funding. So half of, part of the, the new surtax here in the Commonwealth goes to transportation, part goes to education. What are you hearing about additional money? I'm hearing a lot about being funneled to higher education. I'm just curious what you're hearing.
Truthfully, we're, we're not hearing much of a, we're not hearing of, of increases for us from, from those, from those revenue sources.
I, I, I mean, I pay attention to it, to, for my.
Yeah, it was, it was increased last year. It was into about, to about 70, I believe. But it's, we're.
The proposal, the government budget.
The new cherry sheet that.
Yeah.
Is $100 per student.
Yeah, so that would be, that would be an increase of about $30 per student.
Of a couple billion dollars realized and.
It's, it's, I mean, it would be insignificant.
There's, there's a long list of education-focused state legislation that we're tracking and writing and promoting, particularly things that would help change our special education reimbursement, because that would make a really dramatic difference. So we're working on that, but you know, you know how that goes better than any of us.
I mean, at this time, is federal funding guaranteed with all the turmoil that's happening?
Well, that's what she was just discussing.
Why it's on here is a wildcard.
The wildcard part, yeah.
Yeah, most, most of our federal funding that we get as a district goes into special ed costs. So that comes through IDEA, the grants that support, that, that support that. So right now, right now, we have that in this budget at similar levels and, and projected levels at similar percentages for next year. The, the hope is, and the sincere hope is that that, that funding continues as it's been allocated. But again, that's, that is a wildcard.
But while I wish it was a higher percentage, because it'd be nice to have more funding, here's the one particular chance that having a low reliance on those dollars, if they go away, the gap is much smaller to fill.
Yeah. I mean, we talk, we talk frequently about how we are, because of the nature of, of Hatfield, where we are and who we are, it's, we, we tend not to qualify for a lot of federal funding, including grants. And as much as we have gripe about that, it could position us in a place to be a little more insulated than other municipalities from any, any impacts.
Okay.
The next page here, page four, it just talks about staffing required for, for level services. The, the one increase that I'll really talk about here is licensed teachers and licensed staff. The increase reflects an additional, one additional special ed teacher that we are, are hoping to support additional needs at the elementary school. And we're anticipating those needs will, will continue.
It also shows that we are adding headcounts to the ESPs, as are our support professionals. And the reason for that is that we currently have contracted out some of that work. We just couldn't fill it, and so we did what we needed to do to serve kids. And so we've been working all year to make sure that we will be able to fill those slots. So it changes the headcount, but it will be a pretty significant cost savings for us, just because the out-of, out-of-district costs are high.
Correct.
Any questions on that page?
You had, what, the sixth grade class move up?
Yep.
Correct.
So you'll.
That's how that's reflected on that.
Correct. So you'll see a pretty, when you look at the enrollment between the two schools, there's a little dot that tracks where the sixth grade goes, just so we don't lose track of, you know, we're not, you know, that's part of the reason for the increase at Smith Academy. Not all of it, but part of it. So. As we look at the next page, I just, we just want to give you a very short insight into, we continue to work really hard to get better and better at budgeting. And I really have to just share my appreciation for the work that Dr. Driscoll and Riley have done to get us into working with past actuals and a lot of data, because it just makes us more efficient at budgeting and a lot more accurate at budgeting. As we've, you know, continued to do our homework, we just want to make sure that we share some really key stuff that it, that reflects well on Hatfield. The MA Rural Schools study that they did last year shows that small and rural districts, like us, cost 16.7% more than larger districts, and regionalized districts cost an average of 22.7% more. Just if you're playing along at home, there are 106 rural districts in the state, and there are only nine that are municipal. So we're one of the last few municipal districts that are rural. But the upside of that is those tend to be a little bit cheaper than regional districts. And we continue to be on track for meeting the state average of being half of the, of municipal budgets. So typically, rural schools are more than half of the municipal budget. And I, this hopefully tracks us to be right, continuing on the state average. So as we, you, we just wanted to capture some of the ways that 26 compared to 25, but also just to give you some reflection over how this year, if we look well back, post, sort of pre-pandemic numbers, where the shifts are coming from. Administration is really flat. The shift from FY19 is really about where special ed was categorized, because our superintendent was also our special ed director. Instruction costs that are up are very driven by special ed. Other school services, we have a little increase this year for busing. You know, we talked about this a lot last year. If we look back pre-pandemic, transportation costs are up 34%, which is a pretty big hike. Facilities, we're getting better at, at estimating for utilities. We're finally starting to see a little bit of help from having solar at high school, which is awesome. But it's, it's, you know, facility costs are high compared to where they were pre-pandemic. We've cut costs in acquisition and improvement, and then the program with others, that's, that's extra special ed need. Out-of-district tuitions are up. And just since pre-COLA level service was, we're up 311,000 and 115% increase in spend costs relative to that. So post-COLA, our special ed costs are 75% of our increase. And as you, I mean, as you all know, those are legally obligated services that we're providing to those students.
And if you flip to the next page, page six, you can just sort of see the, the increases specifically, specifically around special education year over year. And so that, that's that little, the, the yellow piece there that you see expanding. And, and this is a story that is not unique to Hatfield. This is a story that's, that's playing out across the Commonwealth and really across the country, where we're seeing pretty exorbitant increases in special ed costs. Those are both in district costs, but really a lot of the out-of-district costs have just, just gone through the roof. That's transportation, that's out-of-district tuition. Those are things that, again, that we are, you know, we need to, need to do, but those, those costs are, are increasing.
So the number of IEPs is dropping significantly, but the cost.
Correct.
Right, is going up, and that some of that is probably transportation, depending on where the out-of-district placement is.
Correct. So some's transportation, some is tuition for out-of-district placements, and, and some is services that we, we, we have to bring people in to provide as well. And as you, as you said, you can see that the, the percentage of students who are on IEPs is going down, which is, is good. It should be going down towards that, that 20% mark, which is kind of, the kind of the state average. But the cost of services associated with IEPs is, is increasing. And again, that's, that's not a, not a Hatfield-specific problem. That, that is playing out everywhere. And, and one, one of those things, as Christie mentioned, that is, is sort of top, you know, at the front of people's minds, the politicians' minds in, in Boston, about looking at the funding formula, looking at legislation that can support this, because that's, you know, this isn't, isn't a rural or urban school issue. This is just a, a generalized public school issue. And so that's one place where they're looking that they could, they could support, support schools more. If we, if we hit to the next page, page seven, we're looking at enrollment. And so as, as we mentioned before, we're continuing to work towards growing our enrollment, both at Smith Academy and as, as well as at the elementary school. We have, we're offering those innovation pathways we talked about. As far as I, I can tell in my, my admittedly kind of limited research, I, I believe we are, we may be the, the first, first district to be able to offer concurrent enrollment courses, certainly in this area, possibly in, in the whole state, where we are offering our own staff to get certified to teach college-level courses in-house, which would be a, a real feather in our cap. We are continuing to expand on our aftercare program at the elementary school. That's a robust program now. We serve about 50 or 60 students on average every, every day. And we are expanding those, those kind of enrichment opportunities as well. We are, we've partnered with a, an outside firm to, to look at marketing specifically for schools to increase both retention as well as attract new students. And we're starting to see some of those early results. We had five, five families reach out last week, both at the elementary and secondary level, to get more information. In addition, currently right now, for next year, we have 28 students who have applied for school choice and, and have been accepted. We are at a, a waitlist in one class, but right now we have 13 of those families who have already accepted. And last week was really the first week where they, that would have been formalized. But 13 additional families have already accepted school choice for next year. So we, we really are poised next year, or to, to be, have the first year where we've seen our enrollment increase from the previous year since 2001.
Have you polled students or current families to ask about students leaving?
We have. We haven't, haven't done a formal polling, like, you know, are you staying? Are, are you going? But we've, we've talked to them. We've heard, we have, right now, I think we have nine applicants for Smith Vocational for next year. But we've heard anecdotally from a number of those students that they applied, but they're planning to stay. So we're anticipating probably, probably five students for a Smith Vocational for next year, which would be a, a decrease. And we've, we've heard, we've heard from some families that they're considering options at the elementary school, too. But we've also heard from some of those that we, we heard kind of through the grapevine and conversation with them and said, no, we're, we're, we're staying. So we're, we're hoping that we can, as well as attract new students, retain those that we have.
For example, one of the grades that's doing really well in terms of keeping is seventh grade. So the sixth graders that are moving up, along with the kids behind them, is really good retention, which bodes well.
And, and that's also one of the grade levels where we have a high number of school choice applicants as well, those transition years.
One last question.
Where are these commercials and stuff showing?
It's online, which is.
Yeah, a lot of it's targeted online. And there will also likely be some kind of commercials appearing on like streaming services as well. So still online, but you know, if you're watching Landman or something, you may see a quick, quick spot for us.
It's not targeted at us.
No, I know that.
But he watches, watches TV or reads a newspaper anymore.
The, the beauty of that, though, Daryl, is that it can be really efficient. I mean.
Oh, yeah.
Ad costs are low.
Oh, absolutely. I, I, I applaud it.
The other thing early enrollment has shown us is that we can support two preschool classes next year. We, in fact, I think we have a waiting list of one already. And that, so we had one preschool class this year. We're going to bump up to two next year, and they're both full already. So that's great news. And the numbers behind them from the census data show that the following years will be able to continue. So it's not a one-year blip.
Which happens sometimes.
It does indeed. But I think we're, we'd like to hope that this was just sort of the COVID blip was small, and that we're getting back. And we, we have found that we historically have more kids than show up on the census in town.
So, so the last page here, page eight, is where we, we look at the, kind of the, the total piece. So we talked about the, the town increase, looking at two and a half percent. Total, the increase next year, we're looking at eight, 8.7%. And that includes the increase from choice, as well as grants and other, other funding streams that we have. And, and really, you know, that, part of, part of that is some, some really good planning and, that, that we did from last year to look at, you know, look at those streams and make sure that we were being pretty conservative with where we were spending, so we were able to, you know, able to maintain.
That number's also just a smidge high in that it's, we've started tracking some other revenue sources that, and putting them into the budget where they probably should have been and haven't. So things like our revolving accounts are accounted for in that increase, where that's just, there, it's not quite apples to apples.
Things like athletic revolving.
Aftercare.
Yeah, aftercare, preschool, those.
And preschool doubled from last year, so. So that's where we are. Are there other questions that Connor, Adam, and I could answer?
I mean, that was a very thorough presentation. I don't have any other questions.
And a special thank you to Greg for coming and sitting in on negotiations, which has been great.
We'll see you tomorrow.
Finance?
Yeah, that's, no. Not much has changed since the last time we talked about it.
We just got the, like, we just managed to get all the negotiation-related expenses in that wasn't.
That's good.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's. I didn't, I didn't, wasn't hoping a lot would change, honestly.
You know, I have to give credit to the teachers, the Hatfield Teachers Association, for really being thoughtful in their asks and mindful of what Hatfield can afford to do. So it's been a really pleasant negotiations period.
Need to hear. So, sorry.
Oh, go ahead. No, we were just gonna, just for our next Finance Committee meeting, we're gonna talk about capital.
Yeah.
And what is going to need to be done.
I'll be back.
Because we have some capital. Issues at the schools, particularly that we're gonna have to put on the table, so.
That are not part of the capital plan?
No, everything the school has for capital is on the capital.
Someone's been on the capital plan for.
No, I, I'm well aware. So we, we have what I think is probably our last capital planning meeting tomorrow night.
Indeed. It's a two for night.
Oh, you have two?
Just for me, not for any.
We're at 5:30, right? And you're at what time?
Contract stuff is at four.
Oh, at four. Okay, so before. Okay.
So if I come in, you'll know.
Well, I hope you get it resolved tomorrow.
Yeah, that'll be nice.
It'll be good. It'd be great to get it, you know, out of the way for this process, you know, so we don't have to.
That was our goal.
Keep thinking about it.
Done before the budget needed to be passed, so that just wasn't a scramble later.
Yep. Great. I mean, pretty straightforward.
Thank you, guys.
We'll continue putting the budget together, and we'll let you know where, where everything lands.
Right. It's, it's part of the overall picture.
Part of the process.
Thank you. Are you guys staying, or do we have anything else? I thought it was just the schools tonight.
It's all it is on our agenda.
Well, it is.
Great. Thank you. Thanks. It's almost light out. Almost, sort of. Ed just needed to take a quick break. Okay, so the next order of business this evening was a scheduled executive session. And Mr. Smith, the subject of the executive session, did appear earlier and asked us, asked us to hold this in open session. So this board was presented with a letter from the Hatfield Housing Authority that was read publicly at the last meeting, correct? That basically outlines Mr. Smith's failure to carry out duties as a commissioner, breach of fiduciary duty, violation of bylaws and policies, as well as a qualification lapse. So the purpose of the executive session was to discuss those matters. Sure, come on up.
Attorney Steve Witzke, he's a family mediator and a former selectman from Brookline.
No, 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 no. Other than that, served on the, what was then known as the Board of Alderman. They changed their name to City Council in Newton. And for 12 years I've served.
Okay, great. Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah. If I could start, I'd like to read a statement that I'll submit to Andrew afterwards. Okay, let's see. Hatfield Board of Selectmen. I am submitting the following matters and conditions at Kapewalk Elder Housing prior to my term, prior to my term as Commissioner, ending in May. I believe they are important and should be addressed. I have brought each of these four items to the attention of the Housing Authority. And it is unfortunate these matters continue to be ongoing and unresolved and to have resulted in animus between HHA board members leading to these items being brought before you. One, plumbing repair at Kapewalk. Sewage continues to back up from the second floor into the first-floor apartments. In the four years I've been on Housing Authority, this has been a problem. I brought this up to Executive Directors and at the Authority meetings. And this seems to be a problem that needs to be addressed, as it is a health issue. Repair of crosswalk signal light. As a concession for not accepting a grant to increase safe onsite parking at Kapewalk, the HHA got an agreement with the town to move the crosswalk down School Street near the Town Hall parking entry and install a crossing signal light that HHA got a grant to have installed. This crossing signal has never worked properly, as when it is turned on by a pedestrian, the light flashes only on one side of the street. When I brought this up to my fellow HHA commissioners, they refused to bring this to the Select Board as they felt it was a town problem. My own, on my own, over the last two years, I have alerted the Select Board at Select Board meetings. And to this day, this repair has not been made. Several Kapewalk residents, residents have nearly been hurt or killed by cars not stopping, especially those walkers and wheelchairs. Item three, reconsider the heat pump grant. In the spring of 2023, the state offered a 100% grant to install heat pumps. Kapewalk has, has 42-year-old baseboard heating and no air conditioning. Heat pumps would provide more than a 30% reduction in electric cost, as well as cooling for residents. The Select Board, the Select Board appointed HHA Commissioner objected to heat pumps for aesthetic reasons, because the plan called for 44 outside condenser units. The state reworked the plan and presented a plan that used only 11 outside condensers. And again, in January 2024, the HHA voted to turn down a heat pump grant of $487,000 by a vote of three to two. The reason stated by the no voters was that they, they felt that heat pumps don't work. Yet, next door, at our Town Hall, we have installed heat pumps throughout the building. And have only, and, and not only have saved taxpayers thousands of dollars in energy costs, they have been proven to work. Heat pump grants are still available. And now with a Select Board, HHA Commissioner on the Authority, heat pumps should be reconsidered. Four, move Kapewalk to safer ground. As a member of our 2022 to 2024 master plan, also known as a comprehensive plan, over those two years, we learned from the engineering environmental consultants that should a flood occur again, similar to that of 1984, our Town Hall, schools, safety buildings, and Kapewalk would be flooded halfway up their first floors. The town and HHA emergency plan is to put Kapewalk's 48 residents on a bus and drop them off in the parking lot of the former bowling alley on Routes 5 and 10 and drive away. We need to have a better plan. We need to be proactive and seek grants to move Kapewalk to higher ground, while at the same time, offer additional affordable housing to the more than 700 people on Kapewalk's current waiting list. Copy to Andrew on this.
So.
By the way, before I go on, I'd like to point out that the Housing Authority has a quorum present, and they are not posted.
They're not speaking.
Be an issue as long as we don't have a majority who, a quorum who would speak on the matter. As long as they don't deliberate, we're fine.
So.
I would, I would say we have two who are deliberating.
I have been on the, on the Housing Authority since September. You have not come to a single meeting. So if those things are of that great a concern to you, I don't know why you're not coming to meetings. I don't know why you haven't renewed your qualifications. You've let your qualifications. No, I'm gonna speak now. Okay, so you've let your qualifications lapse. You're not showing up at meetings. We have plenty of documentation here about your bullying, toxic, immature, ignorant and angry behavior at meetings. Unprofessional, obsessive requests for information, trying to paralyze basically the people running the institution. So it's not been a healthy relationship. You have not put forward your best foot in terms of being on this authority. You don't even show up at meetings. So I'm not sure why you want to continue on.
Why are you on our board?
I'm on the board, actually, because you came to me and said that the board wasn't functioning right. But I was smart enough to do some homework. And I spoke to the other people on the board and the people who have left the board because of your toxic behavior. And so, it is true.
It's not true. This is hearsay. Okay, one, one, if I might. Was that the position? Now, you took the position of the governor, governor's appointee. Is that correct?
Yes.
State appointee, that is correct.
Right. Was that position posted publicly? Because the town clerk tells me it wasn't.
The, the town clerk told me it was. There was a vacancy that was posted.
For Kyle Scott's position. The governor's position was to be, there were two applicants that filed with the governor's office. They did not act, yes, within 180 days.
That's right.
But that meant that.
It was all cleared to our town council, our town council.
Let me finish.
It's our meeting. It was cleared to town council. Our town council reviewed everything.
So you didn't have to post the position.
So, I, and, and I got on that board to help make sure that that board started functioning and that people were not abused at meetings and insulted at meetings, and that meetings weren't taking two hours. So that's why I got on the board. And things are running very well, which you would know if you ever showed up.
I did.
You didn't show up.
Until October. And until you shoehorned yourself onto this.
I didn't shoehorn myself onto it. I got onto there just.
You do it legitimately.
I did do it legitimately. It was all cleared through town council.
Applicants that were already there.
It was all cleared through town council.
There is no obligation to have to consider those, those applicants.
Nope.
Okay, there you go. There you go.
Two applicants.
There would have been, Mr. Smith was saying there were applicants at the state. We wouldn't have known that those were applicants. They didn't apply locally.
The state chose not to appoint them.
And there was a vacancy.
And so we acted within our.
Again, I beg the question, why did you insert yourself?
Because I knew that I could make a change there and make a positive change there. That's why. That's why.
Okay. This is why I did not show up. Because after the October meeting, you did this.
I did what?
You inserted yourself on this board.
I absolutely inserted my.
Yeah.
You and a lot of people have a history.
Using your position.
You and a lot of people have a history. I have a file of your history. So the board is functioning very peacefully now. Things are getting done. And you, you have not, you have not upgraded your, or, you know, renewed your qualifications? So there's a qualification lapse?
That's, I'm sorry. There were these people back here. The current chair didn't, didn't take the, the training until last year, you know? Okay, so this is the hostility that's been created.
No, the hostility has been taken care of, Mr. Smith. There's no hostility on the board anymore. The board is functioning quite nicely.
Actually, it's been hostile since I was written in to serve on this board since 2020.
Well, I wasn't involved at that point.
You weren't.
I was not involved at that point. But the people who were involved have, have submitted some, some, you know.
How come? Wait a minute. If, if you have all this, why wasn't it presented to me as part of the packet that was set, that was dropped off at my house by Officer Clinton on Friday afternoon?
This is all information you've seen before?
It is not.
I'm under the impression.
We'd be happy to share it with you. There is no obligation to have to. We're happy to share it with you.
Is that right? Okay.
Sure.
Yeah. Kara?
Since the last time I was here, the Housing Authority had their annual PMR Performance Management Review. The only findings that we had were due to where we received corrective action. And it was because of Mr. Smith's failure to do his certification. I have that document here. I just got it. If the Select Board would like to see it, I'm happy to provide it to Mr. Smith and to the.
You could get that to Andrew and to.
Do you want to see it now, or do you want me to just email it?
Yeah, I think you can send it.
Would you like to see it, Mr. Smith?
Sure. I, I took the training 90 days after I.
You were required to take it every two years.
That's not true, by the way.
It is true, actually.
Unless that changed recently.
Board member training, corrective action. It's because you didn't take it.
And you never shared that with me either.
Well, you signed that you would do it as a commissioner. It's not my responsibility.
Oh, really? Okay. Now, do you understand the hostility here?
I don't see any hostility.
It's not from me. It's not. Okay? Things I pointed out to you earlier have been ongoing. Are you okay with the sewage from the second floor backing up into the first-floor apartments? You're okay with that?
I have no knowledge of that. Kara, do you have knowledge of that?
No, ma'am. I have not had any instances where sewage is backed up since I've been there.
Mr. Malinowski knows. They know. They know.
The only incident that I had plumbing-wise is where we had a faucet issue that we had to replace. And I'm sorry, just to go back and revisit the comment that the, the state said is to refer to Public Housing Notice 201705, Chapter 235, Section 5B states, "Upon appointment and reappointment, or election and reelection, all members shall complete a training program as developed by the department within 90 days of assuming the member's position and complete the training program every two years."
I did the training. So that's where we're at.
I've done it. Yeah. So.
And it was emailed.
Do what you want here. Okay. The thing of it is, I came on this board. I did not run for it. I was written in for it. There were decades of corruption on that board. I came in to try to resolve it. I tried to deal with safety issues. I, I, I go to lunch with residents there, and they tell me terrible, and they're very frightened to speak up. Okay?
I, I don't see that at, at all. They come to meetings. They, we, we chat before, we chat after. It seems very pleasant.
But they don't talk about issues because they're concerned that they may be removed from living there. They, it's, okay? All right. I can tell you that.
I do not believe that to be true.
Yeah. Political retribution. Wow. That's amazing.
For what? What are you, I don't even know what you're.
I worked for Sabadosa. This is what, this is all, this is what it's all about.
It is not what it's all about. Lindsay was at my event the other day. Like, this has nothing to do with that, Chris. This has to do with, believe it or not, your behavior at these meetings consistently over and over.
That's, I have attended all the meetings right up till October. And you, and here's where I ran into a real problem. Okay? The Northampton Housing submitted three documents, two of which were unreadable, one was incomplete regarding the services they were going to provide. At that board, you weren't there. At that meeting, I said to my other two colleagues, "We can't vote this." And they went ahead and voted it anyway. Is that fiscally responsible, I ask you? Really? Because I don't think so. In, in, in May of 2023, Mr. Malinowski and Ms. Shell proposed a motion that would not allow us to meet virtually because COVID was decided to be over. Okay? The policy was voted. And then, come this July, past July, all of a sudden, Mr. Malinowski is calling, is doing virtual meeting. And then in August, and then in September. I didn't see him again until October. In violation of that policy. Okay?
I'm not sure. Is, is Alex allowed to speak?
I wouldn't recommend it. I think that would constitute a, a form. It's not supposed to be.
So the fear of retribution goes both ways, because there's a letter here, you know, from, from Ms. Leopard, that she fears she'll become a target after speaking out about some of this. Look, there's been a complete breakdown, Chris, of your relationship with, with the, the former members of the board. I don't care about your relationship with me. That doesn't matter. I'm here to make sure that the Housing Authority can function. It wasn't functioning. Okay? So I'm there to make sure it's functioning. We've now appointed Susan Slish, who will be coming to the next meeting. I believe I, I know of someone who's taking out papers to run as well. So.
Let me ask you about that.
Why are you interrupting me?
Because you mentioned Susan Slis.
Yes.
Why did you not consider the applicant from last fall, a Betty? Why did you not consider the applicant from last fall, Betty Snell?
No, I know Susan. Susan works with a lot of elderly people in town, and I felt she was the better candidate.
So it was your choice?
Well, no, it was a decision of the entire board. They...
Had you considered the other applicant?
I mean, of course I considered her. I have the materials. No, you don't. Wait a second. Whoa. Whoa. Settle down.
Okay.
We considered the applicants and we picked the one we felt was best. It is within our purview to do that.
So why is this, the Housing Authority, sending out a notice that says they're confirming not coming to a joint meeting, they're confirming the appointment of Susan Slish prior to you doing that and that we are to confirm it at the February 13 meeting? I mean, this is ridiculous.
It's not ridiculous.
It is.
I don't know. They just have to do it legally.
Right, exactly. You're deflecting. This is all just deflecting.
That's what we've been...
Great. How come back in the fall, when she did this, started the executive session...
When I fixed it, you mean?
Why didn't I receive a written notice like I did for this one?
That was an oversight.
That's exactly what you're talking about.
As you know, that was an oversight by...
I am totally at a loss on this.
You're not totally at a loss on this.
A bith voice. I have no... With these people, there's no... You know, like I said, when I came on this board, it's always been hostile toward me. I have made suggestions. I brought up ideas. I pointed out issues. And bullying, it's the other way around.
No, it's... I'm sorry to say, Mr. Smith.
You don't know.
I do know.
So you can't speak.
I do know. I can speak. It's my meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I know. That's how you work. Okay. I think, you know, go ahead. Do your next thing. Write it. Go for it. Are you going to remove me? I'm done in May, right?
Right. There can be no removal tonight. If you did choose to remove Mr. Smith, it would have to be with a hearing with two weeks' notice. So you could consider if you'd like to do that. As you mentioned, his term does end in May. However, if you think the conduct does rise to the level of needing removal, that's an option available to you.
I mean, I do.
Of course you would.
I believe that that was the sentiment of the Housing Authority as well.
From you, yes.
Well, you're going to get it from me too, because the Housing Authority came. And they know what's going on. And everything I've heard from you, you don't like it when they don't agree with you on everything.
Right.
That's been your argument about everything.
Greg, you and I have had conversations.
Yes, we have. Listen to me.
Not on that.
Chris, stop it.
I've listened to what you've said, and I didn't interrupt you. And you were talking about every time you felt that they were hanging up on you or whatever, it was because they didn't share your opinion. That's all. And it's good to have different opinions on...
It is.
But that doesn't mean that there should be retribution if they don't agree with you.
I mean, the behavior was so difficult that other good members of that committee left, three of them. Three of them. And so I just decided it was time to just stop the hemorrhage, right? And make that committee function. And so that's what I came on, and that's what I did.
Let's get the facts straight. One of those three was removed by the Ethics, State Ethics Commission. How's that?
I don't have any documentation on that.
All right. The other two, Mr. Wiltz left, and I got along with him.
Look, they're not here, so we're not going to go into them specifically.
He had nothing. I don't think he would have written anything bad about me.
Chris, you haven't been to a meeting since October.
Right.
Okay. Your qualifications have... No. Well, I mean, I think I went in...
I was at the October meeting.
You've never been at one where I was.
Right, because you put yourself on later.
Didn't you say anything about this?
Anyway. And your qualifications have lapsed.
Well, you know. The test is the same. It doesn't, you know... But I, for years...
Rules are for... So rules aren't for Chris.
You would remove all the rest of them because they didn't take the test until last year. Come on now.
But they're currently covered by the tests.
It's only now. All right.
They're currently... Their qualifications are not lapsed, correct, Kara?
Correct.
Right. So, I mean, it would be my preference to do a hearing or a removal. That's my preference. I mean, obviously, clearly, there's just been a breakdown where this is not going to function well with you on there. It wasn't before. The behavior was horrendous.
You're using...
Not unusual for you.
I would be careful on your terms you're using.
Horrendous?
Really? How about showing some leadership?
I am showing some leadership.
No, you're not.
I stepped in to...
You're saying things. You're calling my behavior bullying and hearsay when I have been the minor voice in this whole thing. Whenever I've discussed things...
Chris, I hate to say it, but you're not the victim, okay? And I have stepped in. I have showed leadership. You came to me and said, oh, you know, this is so terrible. Yes, you did. We're downstairs. And I said, you know what? Maybe it's time we step in. And you said, oh, great. And then I had some conversations with some other folks. And now I'm on there, and I am showing leadership. I'm on the committee. The committee is functioning. The meetings are pleasant. The meetings are productive. Work is getting done. That's leadership, Chris.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we got up till October, renewed our contract with Northampton, okay? I just pointed out, you don't sign a contract is A, eligible, and B, incomplete. Okay?
We signed that contract, correct?
I would not have been a part of that, but I...
You aren't. We're a autonomous board. You aren't. In fact, you really don't have authority here. Okay? My question really is this. If things were so bad, why did the Housing... Hold on. Why did the Housing Authority not do the executive session on their end?
Weren't they unable to find a quorum? Like, weren't they trying to have a meeting, but it was...
There was quorum problems because you were never showing up at anything.
They had three members. They had three members at the time.
Chris, I've said what I need to say, and I do not believe that you can be a member of this board and function and be professional and treat people with respect. So I don't think you deserve to be on the board. So it would be my opinion to, yes, have a hearing to remove you to protect the other members of the board and to protect the residents of Kapalung.
To protect them?
Yeah. From your behavior.
Oh, my God. Are you stoop that low?
It's not stooping low. Your behavior has been terrible at previous meetings.
Really? How do you know this? Were you there?
Because I've spoken to people, people that I know and trust. I have...
Were you there? You were not there.
Christopher.
You can't speak this way.
Oh, I can. I can.
I think you should recuse yourself because of your animosity and your obvious prejudice toward me.
Chris...
You should not vote on this matter.
Because you came to me and said that the board wasn't working.
That's not true.
And so that's when I started doing my homework.
You have a witness that I said such a thing?
That's when I started doing my homework.
That's not true.
That, Chris...
Yeah. I think you should...
It has nothing to do with you personally.
If you were doing this properly, you would recuse yourself right now from any vote regarding me.
We've gone through this with council. I have... We have... Why would I recuse myself, anything to do with you?
Because you are still angry that I supported Sabodosa over you.
I could care less who you supported, okay? I didn't really like you even before that. You're not a particularly likable person.
Yeah, and I've known you since you were a kid who lived across the street from me.
I did live across the street from you, Chris, a long time ago.
That's right.
A long, long time ago.
I think we're getting too personal on things at this point.
I would agree. And I think you see how Christopher behaves at meetings when he's pushed and he's challenged. Thank you.
You.
Well, by a woman, maybe?
No, by you.
No, I think it has to do with that. So I think we have to go through the required hearing, do it all how we're supposed to do it, and remove Mr. Smith from the board. He doesn't show up anyway, and his qualifications have lapsed. It's my feeling.
Just to be clear, you're not voting tonight on...
No, we're not voting tonight. But we would have to make a decision if we're going to do that, correct?
You would have to decide to have a hearing.
A hearing. That would be my decision. I don't see how this relationship would work with...
And your jurisdiction is?
So the select board does have the ability to remove a member, so...
An elected member?
Yes, they have that authority under Chapter 121B, MGL Chapter 121B, Section 6. So that's what they'll have an effect. We'll draw up the letter, and you'll be receiving that.
Did you want to weigh in at all?
I do want to point out that we have, over the months, gone through legal to make sure that we're following all the correct procedures. We did have a meeting a while back, and I believe that you were contacted. We were told you had been gotten a phone call, but you didn't come to that meeting when we met with the Housing Authority.
We ended up not being able to have a meeting because you hadn't been given notice.
Because we were told by the director at that time that you had been called or contacted via email or phone or some way. Anyway, anyways, I mean, I've known you for quite some time. I've always gotten along with you. I think you're a very smart individual. But what I've read so far, you really haven't been a team player with all the other members. I've talked to a bunch of people. And, I mean, sometimes you can win, sometimes you lose. You've got to be able to compromise. And I'm sorry to see that you haven't been able to compromise with your committee. I know you were passionate about the heat pumps, and for some reason, they didn't go through with the heat pumps. And I think that maybe truly you upset you and got you really going on this. I don't know if that was it, but you can't win every war. I mean, you can't... You've got to pick your battles. And right now, it's like you're ready to fight everybody, so, I mean, and you're...
I have no fight with you, Ed.
Yeah, I mean, it's like you...
No fight with Greg.
Yeah.
There.
Well, it's gotten personal, and it's not professional.
That's why I'm suggesting she recuse herself.
When you make...
I'm not recusing myself. This is not... This has... I'm sorry, Greg. Ed, go ahead.
No, it's when you start letting your emotions get involved, you stop being professional on this and looking at things objectively. I mean, there's a lot of hostility in this room right now. And we need to take it down a notch and relax and look at it from a perspective.
So just let me finish my turn.
You're not going to meetings. Your qualifications have lapsed. The animosity is... It's...
Now that we have a full board, I'll be at the next meeting.
We'll have a hearing, I guess, about it.
Well, right now, with the hostility that you have towards all the members, if you go to the next meeting, will you be professional or will you be still anger, anger and hostile and mad?
I have not been unprofessional at any of the Housing Authority meetings.
What I've read, I believe there's been some cases to prove it.
I don't believe that to be true.
Good. Based on what you said.
Based on many conversations with many people.
Look at the minutes. Look at how things go. We have the quorum. We do votes. We go through the agenda.
I've heard enough tonight.
Okay.
So I would like to pursue a hearing in two weeks. I don't... I mean, it's not... I just mean, it's up to my colleagues to do, but...
I'll draw up a letter with town council. We'll make sure to view the process with him, and then we'll make sure that it's scheduled at the right time.
I mean, I just want to make sure they want to move forward with it.
I'd like to move forward with that. I don't know anybody here very well, so I'm just hearing what's going on. And I don't think that the Housing Authority can function well. We're doing it right now, just the way things are going.
Well, thanks, Greg.
I think there's a lot of hostility. And it's not... If you went back on it, I don't think it would function well. I've got to be honest with you. I'm sorry.
I'm the only member that actually cares about the people that live there.
That's a ridiculous statement. That is... That right there shows exactly what I'm talking about. That is a ridiculous statement.
But I can tell you, up till October, that was my sense of it.
I just... I don't like...
I did the best I could. I tried to move the items I presented in the beginning. I tried to get the sewage problem dealt with. I tried to get the lights out here to work.
I know the lights that we had fell, took care of it. I remember the contractor came back about three weeks ago to work on those lights, to fix them. And we were told at that time that the lights were fixed.
I've used them crossing the street. They seem to work when I use them.
Well, that's great. I hope that got done.
And we've never heard anything about a sewage backup over there. If that was a one instance or whether it's ongoing or whether it's a plumbing issue or...
Yeah. And I do have lunch with them every week.
I have lunch with them sometimes, too.
Sometimes. I do it every week.
When we have volunteer committees, we need committees to work together as one and get along with one another. And, I mean, right now, I do have all this information. I have talked to people. I mean, you had a couple people quit, and they were not happy with...
Good people.
I think...
Unfortunately.
Okay.
So I don't, to be honest, don't take this the wrong way. But if you go back on a committee for two months, it's not going to work because you'll bring your hostility towards them. I've just got to be honest with you on that.
Yeah. Yeah, sure. Thanks, pal. Okay. Do what you want.
I'll move with a hearing.
So you'll get a notice.
Yeah. It's more than I usually get.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Mr. Linsky.
Okay. See you later.
Thank you. So I believe that was our last order of business tonight. So I will take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made. Second, any further discussion?
Oh, the only thing I wanted to bring up is we're having the five and 10 people come and give us an update this month.
On the 24th. Yep.
Okay.
And are we going to notify all the residents that they'll be here?
Yeah, we definitely should.
Okay. With that being said, then I will... I'm done with my discussion. So a motion was made.
All those in favor? Aye.